Well, good evening. I hope everyone has done well. Let me go ahead on and call the regular session of our May 4th council meeting to order. I'll ask. Ask this Matthew for the roll call.
Malinowski? Hugh?
Here.
What can you put me on?
McBride? Livingston?
Here.
Tracyo?
Here.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Here.
Overture Walker?
What's that?
Present.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Present, and I was on the phone with Ms. McBride up until 5:59.
She held you up, huh?
Yeah, this dude held me up.
And Mr. Malinowski, did I hear your voice?
Oh, sorry.
His name is there. I did hear him.
Okay, I'm gonna mark him present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is our invocation. Mr. John Joe Walker did inform me that he had a meeting that's gonna run over and he may not be here in time for the invocation. I did speak with Ms. English, Ms. English, and she's gonna provide the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Things you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're more than welcome. If you will, just bow with me. Father, it is in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ that we come to you now, Lord, asking for direction and guidance. Lord, for you to lead and guide us in the decisions that we make. Father, may they be pleasing in your sight, may they be uplifting, may they move our community forward, but always giving you glory. So, Father, we just thank you for the work that our hands have done. We ask you to bless each and every one of us, Lord. And, Father, always give us a heart to serve. We love you and we say thank you. These are all blessings we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if you will, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice.
For all. Thank you.
Very, very much. That brings us to item four on our agenda, which is the approval of our minutes for the regular session of April the 20th. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sir. It's a move, the proper second for approval. Any discussions of exchanges, deletions? If not, I'll ask.
Hello, hello? Did you hear me?
Ms. Malinowski, that you want to be recognized?
Yeah, it is. No, I'm just trying to figure out if I got this thing working. I got no power and Kyle's trying to talk me through on the phone here.
Okay, well, we got you, President. Yes, and right now, I'm just, and, and right now, Ms. Malinowski, we, we, we just simply called for the approval of the minutes, well, taking the vote on the minutes for April 20th.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no changes, deletions, again, I'll ask this Matthew to go ahead and cover them.
Alanowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
That came through, right?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very much. That brings us to item five on our agenda. That is, that is adoption of the agenda. Chair, entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
It's a move.
Second.
Right properly, second. Mr. Brown, do you have any changes, deletions, anything referenced to agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. There's at least one item, specifically item 13B, which is listed as Department of Animal Care, in a governmental agreement with the town of Arcadia Lakes. Chair, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Malinowski had asked, support some questions concerning that item. We were not able to give him that information. He is aware of that. And just asked that item to be removed until we can get him those answers for that particular item, sir, 13B.
Thank you. Anything else? What about my colleagues? Ms. Mackey, you want to be recognized?
Yes, sir. I, I know Mr. Malinowski on the phone and he serves as chair, rules an appointment, but can we remove item from the agenda? We will not be making any appointments this evening.
So, that, that is the whole, that is the report.
Well, Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski?
Yes.
I was gonna, I was gonna take care of that when we actually get to the items so I can give a report so everybody knows why we're not doing anything.
All right.
Okay.
We'll wait.
I apologize, Mr. Malinowski.
I appreciate it. We didn't, we weren't sure whether he was hearing anything or not, so appreciate you.
Well, I just got out of the vehicle. I'm gonna try and plug this in so I don't run out of battery.
All right. Any other, anything, anything else reference the agenda? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with that change, with that removal of item referenced by Mr. Brown, which is 13B.
A move.
It's moved, they're second?
Second.
Okay.
Move properly, second. Ms. Matthews can cover them all for the adoption of the agenda.
Alanowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item six on our agenda, and that is a report of the acting county attorney for executive session items. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no executive session items tonight.
No executive session items, thank you. Brings to item seven, reference citizen, citizen input, 7A, and I, for items on the agenda, not requiring a public hearing. Ms. Matthews, did we have anyone submit anything referencing a public hearing?
No, we don't.
That public hearing is open and now closed. That, that brings us to item eight, which is citizen input, second citizen input, must pertaining to citizen county matter, not on the agenda. Ms. Matthews, did you get anyone to submit anything for this particular?
There was no input.
No input, so that public hearing is now open and closed. I bring us now to item nine on our agenda, which is a report of the county administration. Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of Richland County Council. If you're turning your attention to page 18 of your agenda packet, there you will find some information that I've provided for the council. And I'll go over that information now. Specifically, I want to report out where we stand in Richland County as it relates to the coronavirus and our particular numbers. In your packet, you will find information. You will see two maps. Those maps are found on page 20 and page 21. These documents reflect information that can be found on Department of Health and Environmental Control's website, SEDHEC. And they communicate where we stand as of this reporting on this period. So, from the period of 4/13 to about 4/27, which is roughly that 14-day or two-week window, you can see the percent positive listed as attachment one was showing at 3.7%, which again remains below the 5% goal, which communicates the level of community spread within a community. So, again, that number has trended down overall for Richland County. We continue to see our level of incidence also trend down. We are still showing that we're in a moderate range concerning COVID-19. However, that, that overall number has still come down. So, the last time I gave you a report, that number was in a 140s for the incident rate, and now was in the 130s, which puts us in a moderate range. But again, that number is still slowly coming down. On page 21, you see again total numbers related to the coronavirus in Richland County, broken down by test case, hospitalizations, and again deaths as of 4/27, 11:59 PM. So, again, that information is there for your review and can be found on the Department of Health and Environmental Control's website. Also, on page 18 of your packet, you will notice that I have information specific to the emergency rental assistance statistics. And there you see as of 4/29, when I submitted this document, that we had approved about $528,000 in approved payments for renters who had rental needs or utility needs as a part of our rental assistance program. Now, I know you don't have it in your packet, but I want to give you up-to-date numbers as of right now while we're on this call, just to show you, you know, the, the jump between the amount of approvals that can happen in a few days. So, you note that this was as of 4/29. As of 5/4 today, this morning in particular, we are already over $800,000 in approved payments. So, you can see there's a substantial jump from 4/29 when this was presented to the packet, then 5/4 as of today. So, we continue to see those increases, and I look forward to having additional information concerning that at our next coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting. In addition to this information, I, I did include in the packet the graph that shows the breakdown of some of our applications that we have reviewed at the next coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting. We will have that graph to also add payments by zip code as well as AMI breakdown. So, how many payments went out to individuals based on the prioritization that was given by the US Treasury? So, those updates will also be on the new graph that we'll have for our next coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting. In addition to that, we will have, again, those applications approved by those breakdowns. So, I wanted to share that with you, as well as, there was a question about projections. We, we plan to have that also available at the coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting. So, please be looking, looking forward to seeing that. We wanted to make sure. Get that in the packet. I'm sorry, I hear somebody speaking. We wanted to make sure you got that in the packet so you would have time to review it, so that then you could come to the meeting and be prepared to ask questions that you may have about those documents. A few other things, Mr. Chair, then I'll certainly open up the floor for questions. On 4/28, we had a coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting. Out of that committee meeting came a couple of requests and a couple of steps for our staff to take. One is to review the mask ordinance in response to CDC guidance changes. So, we expect to have that information available for the coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting as well. Also, there was a request for our staff to come up with a proposal for the COVID-19 memorial. We are working on that to provide that as well. So, I wanted to share that with the council, the full council. And then the last two things I would just mention is, we talked about it in the coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting, but we wanted to make sure the council is aware that there are two programs that are going to be launched. I believe the state is gonna launch their rental assistance program on tomorrow officially and open up. And then the city, along with the cooperative ministry, has launched a program. We actually had a meeting with the state program today. They were very interested in hearing how Richland County set up its program. They're very complimentary of what we've been able to accomplish as compared to other entities around the state. So, I'm just, again, want to communicate that to you because the team that's been working on this program really has been doing a good job and is being recognized by, by its peers as to how our program is going comparatively speaking. So, I did want to share that with you. But we also want you to be aware that that program is gonna be kicking off, and so if you have individuals that are your constituents who want to know how to apply for rental assistance from Richland County, they would need to go to our program to do that. And we have communicated with the state that if we get individuals, which we already have, who come to our program, but it needs to go to the state, that we'll share that information with them. And they have agreed to share the information with us for individuals that happen to go to them that should be coming to Richland County. So, we are certainly meeting with as many folks as we can that have these programs to make sure that there's not a duplication of benefits and to make sure that we all are communicating with each other to serve the community at large. So, I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. Chair, and open up the floor for any questions concerning any of the information that I covered.
Very much. I have Ms. Tracyo and Ms. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, I, you know, I know these numbers are listed as approved payments. What's the lag time between, say, an approval and the money actually going out? Is that same day? Once the, the person knows that they're gonna get this assistance, how long is it until they actually receive the support?
Yeah, maybe I can have the finance director weigh in on that, but these are rolling approvals, so we're not batching those things. So, as they get approved by the approval panel, that information is then communicated with our team, and so I'd see Director Hamm on the call. So, if it'd be appropriate, Mr. Chair, if you could recognize Ms. Hamm to respond to Mr. Tracyo's question, please.
Ham, please.
Stacy Ham, Finance Director. Yes, the, we received the information. We cut checks once a week. So, as we receive them, we're entering it and it enters into the workflow. We have cut checks last week and we will be cutting checks again tomorrow. So, that will get, most of the ones from last week will all get cut this week.
Okay, great. So, it seems like it's going pretty, pretty good, at a pretty good pace. Thank you.
Baron and Ms. McBride?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for your report. I just want to be clear about the multiple programs that are going on for rental assistance. I, I, I'm a little concerned about the, the number, while, while we're not, we don't want to duplicate services, but we are, to some degree, with the different programs that are going on with the same objective. And so, have we given thought to really addressing the multiple programs and how specific we need to be with our, with the citizens of Richland County so that they know that, hey, if you, if you need funds for rental assistance or utility assistance, then you need to apply with Richland County? Have we, have we thought through that? Because I can just see people just pulling at straws, and, and, and here's a follow-up question to that. If they're denied by us, can they go to another pot of money or another organization and apply?
So, I'm gonna try to tackle some of that question, and I might have Mike King or Pat Beadman weigh in on some of this. So, in terms of giving thought, yes, ma'am, that's, that's why we're coordinating. As soon as we heard these other programs were going to be kicking off, because I know that there was concern about Richland County's program kicking off a little slow. But the, the state has come in after us, and the city and corporate ministries have actually come in after us. So, our program was out there and up and running. As soon as we heard that they were gonna be opening programs, we reached out and said, we want to make sure that we are coordinating together so that there is no duplication of benefits and that people get the service that they need. So, we have agreed that if a citizen applies for a program, and it should be in another jurisdiction, that we will make that handoff so that the citizen does not have to take another step. And again, so, and that's a conversation that we have agreed with, with the parties. In terms of can a person apply for another pot of funds, if they are ineligible or denied by Richland County, then it depends on what that pot of funds is. So, related to this specific program, the US Treasury Program, the Consolidated Appropriations Act, there are specific guidelines with that program. If another agency is using a different pot of funds, such as, and I really don't want to get this conversation convoluted, but if they're using some CDBG funds or some other CARES Act funds, then there may be different guidelines that individuals can apply for, but under the US Treasury guidelines for this rental assistance program, it will be the same. It just depends on what jurisdiction that you're in. So, I, I hope that's not too convoluted, but I don't want people to think that if they don't get money from this program, that that means that there is no program they can get money from, because that may not be an accurate statement.
No, you, you have, you, you definitely answered the question. Mr. Chair, may I have a follow-up question, please? And that would be, what's our status? I know in the, in the ad hoc committee meeting, we talked about unrolling our community outreach portion of this, of our rental assistance. Where, where are we with that, that portion of the program?
Yes, ma'am. So, and I'm gonna ask Mr. King to probably step in here, because we've also engaged a few other organizations since our last conversation in terms of training them and putting more workforce out there, if you will, for people who are, who are already contacting or in contact with communities. Mr. King, if you're on the call, could you talk about the school system and maybe other partners that we've engaged in trying to get out in the community, sir?
Yes, sir. It'd be my pleasure. I hope everybody can hear me. We're part of the storm that went through. We had quite a bit of damage. It's a power outage up here. But one of the things we're really excited about since our last meeting is we are partnering, at this time, we're partnering with Richland 2 and also Richland Lexington and five school districts to work with their caseworkers at the schools. We're gonna be providing training on the program so they can assist our families, that they know that different families in need for applying with the program. We have reached out also to Richland 1. We hope that they'll partner with us, that we're able to do that. And again, in fact, our first training session, we have a virtual training session scheduled for Thursday for both Richland 2 and also Richland Lexington 5. The other thing we're doing, we're also communicating, as, as Administrator Brown said, with the state, looking at partnerships, and they're, they're looking at our outreach program. And we're very pleased with some of the efforts we're doing. And, and again, we're also partnering, I just finalized contacting the seven points of contact for administration of the ERA program in the seven counties, which were provided a direct allotment. So, we are also talking, looking at ideas, suggestions, recommendations. So, we're doing about everything we can on that part to make sure we're, we're getting and soliciting any type of ideas. And also, we just recently went in contract with our Spanish-speaking media, and we're gonna be doing a media blitz, both broadcast, and I don't know if Beverly's on here or not, but she's got quite a program, both broadcast banners, written media, news media. So, we're very excited. That's just getting kicked off now. So, from everything we could tell, it seems like that we have really an excellent outreach program, and we're gonna continue those efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Baron, you said, floor you through?
Yes, sir, I'm finished.
Ms. McBride?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown, and the staff that has been working with you on this program. I want you to know that I really appreciate your efforts, and I, I don't want to be a killjoy by any means, but I am still concerned with the numbers and the amount of the 12 million that we do have. I'm concerned with the actual outreach. I've asked several times to look at the faith community and look at something innovative with them. I'm wondering about Richland 1, that they respond really late and not respond timely as the other school districts. I would like to hear that. And again, I am concerned about the numbers that we have. So, and our outreach with the faith community and doing something innovative, and that's different from what we've done in the past besides sending out notices and requesting that they and that's different from what we've done in the past besides sending out notices and requesting that they volunteer to help. I think that there's another way to really include um that sector, the faith base. I think that we really have to find a way to get directly into those communities. And I applaud the efforts that you're doing, but I have suggested other means. The other part, um, and again, I don't know what, well, South Carolina is the last and everything. So I don't give um much credence to how fast we're moving other progress that South Carolina is moving. But we could look at more other progressive states to see and counties to see what they are doing. But I do, uh, I want you to know, I appreciate the work that is being done um by the staff. And my last um statement is regarding the COVID nineteen and the positive test. Do we have that information? It's great to see that um Richland County is at three, at the three-point something level. That's that's good. But do we have that information by uh by zip, excuse me, by zip code? Or can we find that information by zip code?
Uh, and to a certain degree, yes, ma'am. On the Department of Labor's webs, as Department of Labor, excuse me, Department of Environmental Control's website, uh they have uh several different uh maps concerning county-level data. Uh, you can also look at uh case count uh by zip code uh as a part of that on Department Labor's website. Say it again, Department of Environmental Control's website. Uh, so yes, ma'am, we do have county-level access uh and which would include zip codes uh on that, on those maps on the DHEX website, which is where uh we get our information from that we share with this body.
Thank you, because when we started the testing, you know, there are certain areas where the test was much higher than other areas, so where there was no testing being done. So where overall, the rate may be, and I can't recall, three point seven percent. Uh, in one district, in one area, if we look at it, it could be seven, eight percent, or it could be lower. So that's my concern, to make sure that as we move forward, we're not leaving out any of those areas that have high risk or high percentage of positive cases. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And and Ms. McBride, I I certainly uh again, take to heart uh and thought what you said. Uh, certainly, we had an initial reach out to uh email blast to the faith-based community, uh trying to get some support from that perspective so that we could see how to attack that. Uh, and I and I know that um when we talk about benchmarking, that we may not be looking at South Carolina as a good benchmark. And so I I I certainly don't don't know what to say about that. But I I certainly would say that in terms of uh the rate of our approval process, the rate of our payments. I would just say that we we've been told that this program um is is a solid program from uh officials who do this around the country. So um hopefully, there'll be some solace to you. But I understand that you you want to be uh at the very top, and right now, we're not there. But I I don't want you to think that we're anywhere close to the bottom, because my understanding is throughout the country, we're not.
No, I'm I actually, I'm not really looking at at ratings. What I am concerned about is reaching um the citizens. And I'm concerned that this is emergency funding. And when emergency funding begins to extend months, then many people may be evicted while they wait for the emergency funding to come in. So um that's one of my major concerns, and that's why I'm stressing um maybe looking at another, an additional component in working with the faith-based community and not just uh you, sometimes you have to have more direct relationships. And um I would be glad to work on that, and I know Ms. Baron would also. So I I appreciate what you're doing, and I don't want you to think, or any staff members, to think that I don't appreciate the work that's being done and that you're not doing um the best you can do with it. So please, don't take that away that I'm not appreciative of what's being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Baron?
Um, that concludes my report. Unless there are any other questions, sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item ten, which is reported of the Clerk of Counsel. Ms. Mathis?
Um, so I just wanted to report just a couple of quick meetings for you. Um, we have a budget work session on May sixth. That's at four P M. That's a Zoom meeting. We also have a budget work session uh scheduled for May thirteenth at four P M. That's also a Zoomed meeting. Uh, we have several meetings on hold from the land development uh regarding code rewrite. Um, I'll go through a couple of them, but they have been listed in your report. If you'd like me to read all of them, I will. Um, May twentieth, there is a county council work session on remapping. That is four P M. to six P M. That is a Zoom session. On June tenth, there is a hold for the county council work session on public hearing draft. That is also from four to six P M. via Zoom. On June twenty-second, there is a zoning public hearing and first reading of the public hearing draft. Um, that is to be determined what time that will occur is to be determined. Um, and then June twenty-fourth, there is a county council work session on pub- and a public hearing draft that is again from four to six via Zoom. Um, moving on, um also, there are meetings scheduled for July thirteenth, which is the second reading uh of the public hearing draft, and then July twentieth, which is the third reading of the public hearing draft. Um, so again, those are some of the holds that are there for the, excuse me, for the for the land development code rewrite. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is item, you don't have any question of of the Clerk of Counsel? If not, the next item on our agenda is item um eleven, which is reported with Chair. I don't have a report, but I just, I do want to inform you that I did run into the Mr. Hart, Lou Cowell, who is the Director of the Public Revenue, and had a brief conversation with him at a function and we talked briefly about our pay program. That brief conversation went very well, and so we agreed for a follow-up meeting to discuss this whole item. And I also I mentioned that to um our county administrator and legal um attorney. And if anything come of that, I'll report back to Counsel and 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 legal. Just wanted to inform you of that.
Mr. Chair.
Next is item twelve. Miss, you recognize?
Thank you. S- sorry to to go back to item ten, the Report of the Clerk to Counsel. Just want to verify, I'm looking at what's in my agenda on pages twenty-five and twenty-six, and I may need my glasses, but the code, the the meetings about the code rewrite that you mentioned, are they on this document that's in our packet? Because I don't see them, but I'm ready to grab my glasses if I'm wrong.
They should be. If they're not, let me know. I'll make sure that they get, you were also sent these out on Fri-. This this particular report was sent out on Friday by Ms. Only.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, just ask later, just double-checking um so that it's part of the comprehensive event list, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mathis, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Beadman. Good, good point. That brings us to item twelve on our agenda, which is open, closed public hearings. We have um twelve A as uh one um public hearing that is on an ordinance authorized and equipped clean B of Olympia Alleyway to the contiguous um land owner. Uh, that public here is now open. Anyone sign up um to present anything reference that public hearing? Ms. Mathis?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Uh, item twelve is a public hearing regarding Olympia Alleyway. Um, was there anyone signed up to speak to that public hearing?
No, sir.
That public is open and now closed. Um, item thirteen um on the agenda is 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 your approved consent items, which is thirteen A through F, with the exception of B, which was removed from the agenda. Um, so Chair and Attorney Moore, regarding the consent items, A, B, um, I'm sorry, A, C, D, E, and F.
Mr. Chair?
Is that Ms.?
It is. Move to item thirteen A.
Would that remove, you saying?
Uh, move to approve. I I did this one separately because some of the other items require reconsideration.
So your motion is for for item thirteen A?
Yes.
It's moving proper second for item thirteen A discussion. If there been no discussion, um, Ms. Mathis, can you call the role for the vote for item thirteen A?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item thirteen C.
Mr. Chair, point of information, items thirteen C, D, and E have been requested for reconsideration. Can we vote on those as a block and reconsider them as a block, or do they need to be addressed individually?
I think we can, but I'll I'll yield to the attorney to make sure. I think we've done anything to pass. That means right though. Mr. Klein?
Uh, yes, sir. You you can do that. If anyone has issue during the reconsideration, they you can break them out during reconsideration.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Newton, you recognize? You I mean, you say the floor?
Uh, I'll yield to my colleague, Mr. Malinowski.
Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Newton. I'd like to, before you get voting, remove items E and F, please.
Move E and F.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Move to approve items thirteen C and D.
The motion for thirteen C and D is a second.
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 Moving properly second. In discussion reference item thirteen C and D. If not, I'll ask Ms. Mathis to cover the vote for items thirteen C and D.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to item thirteen.
Mr. Chair?
E, I'm sorry.
Uh, move.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you. Move to reconsider items thirteen C and D.
Thank you. The motion for reconsideration by thirteen C and D is improper second. Um, Ms. Mathis, can you cover the role for the motion for reconsideration for items C and D?
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracyo?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now that bring us to item um thirteen E. Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can discuss E and F together, and my only concern on both of these is that uh on one of them, the attorney, the attorney's office had some concerns with the agreement. Uh, in the other one, there were some, there were some concerns also uh relating to the actual uh rental agreement that the magistrate was being asked to enter into, not only by the legal department, but also by Department Director Pruitt. And I really, myself anyway, would like to see what the final agreement is and not just vote, okay, let's approve it, move it on down the line. And later on, somebody comes back and says, well, Counsel, you approved this. Didn't you know what you approved? And right now, the answer is no, because what is in front of us is the exact same wording and information that was in front of us at the committee meetings. Now, I realize we said we'll approve it contingent upon the attorney's review, but the attorney has provided us no additional information relating to that review. So based on that, until we get that information and have the opportunity to possibly ask additional clarifying questions, I would make a motion to defer items E and F.
Um, let me just check and see whether or not the the administrative attorney have some of that information now.
Okay.
It's Mr. Brown and Legal, um, Mr. Klein. Um, you reference Mr. um Malinowski's, Malinowski's comment regarding uh public works. Are we familiar with what he is referring to and whether or not you have answers to the question that he's raising?
I'll have to ask Mr. Malone to come on. I don't remember the one about public works, uh because that item was an item that was a a grant that was being covered by uh the state. I can't remember what what that question was, so I would just say, uh.
Admin- Administrator Brown, that's at the bottom of page fifty-six of our agenda, where it says the county attorney's office has reviewed the agreement and has noted some issues. So what are the issues and have they been resolved?
Um, Ms. Klein, can you respond to that?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Malinowski, nothing has been resolved on that at the moment. Um, I will tell you, my issues are, um, one that I originally brought to the attention of the um department, and that is the grant agreement itself mentions a two-month approximately uh timeframe, a term for this. And it it doesn't actually um state what we're doing. It 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 has some sort of summary of, yes, this thing will take place over two months and we'll get we'll get some money perhaps. But that is not actually the process that's gonna happen. I just wanted the process and the agreement to match. Um, just in case there's an issue later, I don't want the state to be able to come back and say, well, you know, we said two months and and something didn't happen. According to the department, I I tried to, I think it was Mr. Staley I spoke to, it could have been Ms. Malone, I'm not positive. Um, that the state is fine with anything like that. They they don't have an issue with it. But the actual agreement they sent over does not match the process that we've been told.
What needs to happen so it could match?
On my end, I just was gonna send back some language to make sure, or have the state send some language, one or the other. It should be a pretty quick fix. I mean, I have no problem with the grant. Um, our department has no problem with the grant. State has no problem with the grant. Just want to make sure that the the words of the agreement match up what we're doing.
Ms. Baron, you recognize?
So it, so yes, I I would like to speak to that um point, and and you're absolutely right, um, Ms. Klein. They, the the state is fine with with the terms. But if I I would just like to encourage you that if 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 there is some um language that you would like to to see in the document, just based on my conversations with um DHEC, uh, they're fine with any type of amendment or any changes that we make to the document. And I would just like to encourage uh staff to to move as expeditiously as possible as this community has been waiting for roads to be fixed since two thousand fifteen flood. Um, and and so we we really should do our due diligence by making sure that the documents are are in line and that the processes match indeed. But if it's something that we can do on our end to move things along, I would just like for us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and what was the concern with item thirteen F?
Just so you know, on on that one, Mr. Chair, I'm fine with moving along. I I full well believe we should be approving it, but I just want to make sure that legally we're standing on solid ground before we approve something.
Well, can you? Can you make the motion with that with that understanding there before you do anything?
Sure, I made the motion that we move, that we move forward with approval pending what legal has just told us that nothing has entered into until the process and the uh agreement uh match.
That makes sense, okay. So a- and and you're referring to um?
E. Right at thirteen E, a move that we uh allow legal to move forward, but do not enter into any agreements until the uh the process and the agreement match according to uh what they feel is best for the county.
Okay, yeah, okay. You heard the motions. That's second. Is there second to move this forward?
Second.
It's to move them properly.
Mr. Chair? Um, yeah, just a a, I guess, point.
Yeah, just, uh, uh, I guess point of clarification, uh, as we were going through, I marked C, D, and E as move for approval and then for reconsideration, but we just moved and reconsidered C and D?
That's correct.
And, and this motion is for E and F?
The, the, the current motion's for E.
The current motion is for E. Okay, and just while I have the, the floor, I guess, does this one also need to be reconsidered?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm all square now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's moving properly, second. Any further discussion? Um, Ms. McBride, you need to speak to, do you, do you need to speak to thirteen E? Ms. Mackey, you need to speak to thirteen E?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna, I know we made the motion, but is, is there a possibility to tie in timing to this so that the, uh, attorney's office can complete this in a timely fashion so we can help this community get this done, and we're not still taking forty-five days to get it done?
Yes, and I'll be nice and ask, um, legal from, you know, what, what's gonna be a reason, what, what's the reasonable time, um, so we, we can expect it to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. As long as I get no, uh, uh, big kickback from DHEC, I wouldn't imagine it'd be more than a week.
You heard that, Ms. Mackey?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, it's to move the proper, so any further discussion, reference item, um, thirteen E. Ms. McBride, did you wanna speak to thirteen E?
That's okay, based on the last statement from, um, our attorney, but I'll just wait to talk about thirteen F.
Thank you very much. Also, so if you're moving properly, second, no further discussion. Ms. Masters, can you call the role for the vote for the motion for item thirteen E?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Uh, yes, on behalf of the Springwood Lake Community.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? English? Newton?
Yes.
But that was Ms. English and.
That was Ms. English.
Yes, also.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now that brings us to item thirteen F, and the question was then again, there was.
Yeah, please, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we need to make a motion, make a motion to reconsider that last item.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malinowski. I accept the motion reconsideration, that's second.
Second.
Moving properly, second reconsideration for item thirteen E. Um, Ms. Masters, can you call the role for the vote for item thirteen E?
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Yeah. Now that brings us to item thirteen F. Ms. Malinowski, you recognize that was one you pulled to.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this is another one that, uh, in the committee, uh, as I said, we, I support this wholeheartedly, the, uh, magistrate moving out of the old building he's in and getting something better for his staff and himself. However, there were concerns i- in this one, uh, this is by Director Pruitt of Operational Services. Uh, I had voiced several concerns about some of the language in the actual agreement, and rather than go through all that again, hopefully, uh, Ms. McLean has all that written down, if not, I'd be glad to get with her offline to go over it again, but what's in front of us is the exact same thing that was in the committee. There have been no changes, there have been no, there has been no information that addresses these concerns of the Operational Services Director, Mr. Pruitt, uh, concerns that I brought up about the lease, and even concerns that legal had about the lease. This is one that, because it is an actual lease, I would like to see the final copy of the lease before we vote to approve it, and for that reason, I would move to defer this to the next meeting only, and there should be no reason we can't have that in two weeks.
Motion for the furl is their second.
Second.
Moving properly, second for the furl. Um, the furl is not debatable. Um, the chair would ask Ms. Masters to call the role for the motion for the furl for item thirteen F.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracio?
No.
Joe Walker? Joe Wa- I didn't catch that, I'm sorry. Mr. Walker?
This is Joe Walker. My vote is no.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
And is, is it possible that we can get it? Ms. McBride, you're recognizing?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I would like to, I was to talk for our attorney to address whether she finds, uh, um, the contract, um, ready to move forward after her review, based on her review.
Yeah, you're recognizing, Mr. Chair.
Ms. McLean, you're recognizing.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. McBride, frankly, I don't think it's ready to go forward. Um, I think, I know it's important, I know we wanna move quickly, but I've had a discussion with Mr. Pruitt. Um, he has legitimate concerns. I had some concerns about the agreement. There were a few changes to insurance we need to take care of. Essentially, the, um, the lease is, has language that's all geared towards landlord, not at all the tenant, um, including, uh, county maintaining all the heating, air, uh, utility kind of paying utilities, and that's, it's not, um, maybe, uh, where we want it to be. And I'm not saying this, it can't go forward at all, but I think we have a little more work to do.
Well, um, I think you were reviewing it and bringing back the, at this meeting, the recommendations for changes, so you haven't had the opportunity to do that yet.
I have spoken with, uh, Mr. Pruitt. Um, we have not, I have not put those together in, um, I believe that was just yesterday. I have not put it together in language, um, and I, Mr. Judge Edman contacted me about getting language, um, but we have, I have not gotten with him yet to, uh, give them a new draft or, or cha- suggestion changes, other than the ones I presented originally.
Mr. Chair, I just, you have the floor?
Yes.
Um, um, Ms. Maline, um, Mr. Pruitt, he reviews our contracts?
He doesn't typically review contracts, but he does when they deal with operations.
I'm trying to, to correlate his review in this particular contract with the normal contract, our contract with, um, with the magistrate office. I'm not quite following the input there.
Uh, my understanding would be as, uh, head of operational services, um, it would be his department having to maintain the building, should, um, should the county have to provide maintenance, um, and, uh, so he would go in and also check to see what shape the buildings in, um, uh, would discuss items like us needing to make repairs or things like that, so, um, tho- those are the kinds of things he's commented on so far.
Oh, so those, that's the normal procedure in us leasing a facility?
Yes, he, his, his office would go in and, and, uh, check out the leased facility, correct?
That was my question. Was that a part of the normal procedure?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Thank you.
Ms. McBride?
Yes, sir.
I'll have Ms. Newton, again, Ms. Baron.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. My question is a, a somewhat of a follow-up to Ms. McBride's, which is, and the reason that I voted not to defer is because you, deferral's non-debatable, so we couldn't ask any questions. So in terms of this item, sometimes we have motions where we'd say, you know, pending legal update and approval that we move forward, and sometimes we have the agreements brought back to us. So I just wanted to understand, based on your level of concern with the changes that you would like to see, if this is one of those cases where you see truly substantive changes being made, where we might wanna take, take a look again, or if they're more straightforward changes, where you, you feel like, you know, it, they're, they're changes, but they're not necessarily that big a deal, um, and we might approve moving forward pending your changes. Understanding that it's unfair to ask you to speak for us, I'm trying to understand, let me comfort with the agreement.
Absolutely. Um, I, I do understand that, and I, I will say that I'm, I'm, I'm sort of sitting on the fence. My, my gut feeling tells me that we need more time, and I'd rather bring it back to you.
Okay.
But I'm not opposed to the other route. If, if I know that this is an emergency for this, for the magistrate, they need this to happen, and so, um, I can, I can make those changes, you give me leeway to bring it back to you if I find substantive changes that I think need to come back, but, um, if, if we find that they're just basically, uh, ministerial-type things, uh, language issues, then we can go forward, but I, the ones that concern me are Mr. Pruitt's concerns, just getting those taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome. Um, Ms. Baron?
Uh, I, I wanna speak to, to the point of Mr. Pruitt and his involvement with legal. Um, while I understand his input is valuable when it comes to assessing a building, I'm concerned about how valuable his input is when reviewing a legal document. Um, and so that's a statement, not really a question. Um, so I, I am a little, I, I'm a little concerned with that. Um, just everybody has a role to play, and I think that everybody should stay there in their, in their ro- in their respective roles. Um, and then I do, um, Ms., y- you, you mentioned it. You, you said this is, this is a critical area, and we fly through certain things that usually have little to no importance or urgency. But we, we've got, our judicial system is in a deplorable building. No one should be asked to work in these conditions, so I would just like to admonish, um, our legal counsel to, if this, if this contract is not, um, if it's not sound, if it's something that we can't, that you, that you know, oh, no, Richland County does not need to get involved with this, tell us sooner than later, um, and, but expedite the process, because I, I'm concerned at the point of if Judge Edman and his team and the, and the citizens of Richland County continue to go in and out of these buildings, we're gonna have other issues to continue to work, to be concerned with, whether it's health challenges or, uh, legal challenges for people falling and getting hurt and all those things. So I, I just, I, you know, I just wanna go on the record to say those types of things, to say that tonight, that, you know, we, we really, we've got to, we've got to take care of the people that work for us.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Again, um, uh, the item before us is item thirteen, um, F. Um, is there a motion, and the previous motion, um, failed, is there a motion regarding item thirteen F? Come before the vote. Is a motion for item thirteen. Ms. Baron, you're recognized.
Is Ms. Mackey?
That's Ms. Mackey. I was going to speak.
That's Ms. Mackey, you're recognized.
Sorry. Uh, this chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, was it thirteen F?
Yes.
To move forward with thirteen F pending the review of the contract by Attorney McLean, being brought back to us at our next meeting.
Right, the, the motion, that's second.
Second.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Yes.
Mo- yes. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with thirteen F pending review of the contract by Attorney McLean and brought back to us at our next meeting.
Right, the motion, that's second.
Second.
It's moving properly, second. Discussion. There'll be no discussion. I'll ask Ms. Masters to call the role for the motion for item.
It's.
Ms. Newton?
Yeah, sorry. And, and I don't know if the maker of the motion would, would be willing to, to accept an amendment. I think that it, it's clear that we all wanna make sure that our legal concerns are addressed and that our, our attorney feels comfortable. I wonder if we would be okay giving her the latitude to say, if these turn out to be ministerial changes that are simple, that she moves forward with the agreement, and if they're more substantive, that those changes are brought back to us at our, our next meeting. So that, that's a question. Um, before I try to amend your motion.
Yes.
So then, if, if you don't mind, in the spirit of trying to keep it simpler, I'm gonna offer a, a substitute motion, so I don't have to figure out how to amend that, and my substitute motion would be that we authorize the county attorney to modify the lease agreement for the Pontiac magistrate office and move forward with any ministerial changes, or bring back substantive changes to council at our next meeting for approval.
Second.
That substitute motion, it was properly second. Um, in discussion regarding the substitute motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we're dealing with right now, when you start throwing words like ministerial changes and substantive changes, you're looking at personal opinion. What may be substantive to you may not be to me, and the same would be to Ms. McLean. So I don't think it's fair to put that burden on Ms. McLean and later on have somebody come back and say, well, that was a major change. Why didn't you bring it back to us? Uh, I, I can support Ms. Mackey's motion the way it was, but I can't support this one because it leaves too much, uh, objectivity in there for the individual. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion regarding, um, the substitute motion?
Take the vote.
There being no further discussion, um, Ms. Masters, can you call the role for the substitute motion regarding item thirteen F?
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to, um, item. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Do we need to reconsider thirteen F?
I will accept a motion for that, yes. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to reconsider.
Second.
Thirteen F.
Moving properly, um, second for reconsideration for thirteen F. Um, Ms. Masters, can you call the role for the motion for reconsideration for item thirteen F?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. That brings us to, um, item fourteen on our agenda, and these are our first reading items. Fourteen A, and ordinance to raise revenue, make appropriations, and adopt. Fourteen A, an ordinance to raise revenue, make appropriations and adopt an annual budget fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two for Richland County, South Carolina, or fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand twenty, and ending January third, two thousand twenty-two. So as to raise revenue, make appropriations and adopt the general fund, millage agency, special revenue bonds, enterprise funds and debt service fund budgeted for Richland County, South Carolina for fiscal year beginning January twenty-twenty-one, and ending January thirty, twenty-twenty-two by Tyler Only. Um, check out the motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Move for first reading is a second by Tyler Only.
Second.
Moving properly, second, end discussion. There being none, Ms. Matthews can call the role for the motion for approval for item fourteen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
No.
Was that a no?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item fourteen B. This is companion to fourteen A, which is an ordinance authorizing the levying of, of everlaring property taxes together with the prior year's carryover and other state levies. And an additional amount appropriated by Richland County prior to July one, twenty-twenty-one will provide sufficient revenues for operations of Richland County government during the period from July one, twenty-twenty-one through June twenty, twenty-two by Tyler Only. And check out the motion.
So move.
Second.
Move and second, um, approval, um, end discussion. There being none, I'll ask Ms. Matthews to call the role for item fourteen D.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us, um, to item fourteen C. Providing for assistance for, uh, provide for assistance of the refunding revenue bonds in one or more series. Tax exempt or tax taxable in an amount not to exceed eighteen million dollars to refund the county's outstanding village outstanding improvement district assessment revenue bonds, series two thousand four and other matters related there to. Check out the motion for, uh, for item fourteen C.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And properly second. End discussion, reference item fourteen C.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Rachel, was that you first, the Malinowski?
Yes, I was just hoping that we could get, um, just a little, uh, explanation or background from staff, uh, for the benefit of the, of the public.
Um, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, to address Ms. Tracyo's request, uh, I would turn your attention to page ninety-three of the packet. And I do also have, uh, on this call, uh, available, uh, Mr. Ray Jones, uh, as well as Mr. David Cheatwood, both bond counsel and then financial advisor. So I recommend the approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of assessment revenue bonds to refund the two thousand and four assessment revenue bonds. The purpose of this is to reduce annual debt service by an average of a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars total cash flow savings related to this issuance by approximately two million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that is the, uh, impetus behind this request. Councilmember Tracyo is to save, uh, uh, payments for the county that we would otherwise have to make. Uh, but by doing this, we would actually reduce our, uh, payment that we would owe on this, by doing these refunds on these bonds. So it would be a benefit to the county to do this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any, any further discussion, reference item, um?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski.
Bill Malinowski, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one question and possibly Mr. Cheatwood would have the answer to this. While we're, while the people within the improvement district, the taxpayers in the improvement district are the ones that benefit, is there any cost to the county to do this?
Uh, yes, sir. Happy to jump in here on that question. So there is a cost of issuance related to this, um, transaction, just like you have on any financing. The, the savings figures that are in your packet, and Mr. Brown quoted, are already net of those, um, assumed cost of issuance that consists of legal fees, financial advisory fees, underwriting fees. Um, and so there are fees, the, the county, um, they are paid from refunding bond proceeds, and so they are baked into, uh, the new debt service numbers that would result from a refunding and therefore baked into the new assessments that are levied on those, uh, property tax, uh, th- those, um, property owners in that area.
So would it be fair to say that any cost that the county incurs would be paid for through the improvement district?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
And let me, and let me just quickly say, I think this is, uh, let me first of all thank staff for, 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 for thinking about doing this, because this is a tremendous benefit to our county. Uh, i- 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 in keeping mind, those folks are trying to keep the village going. If, if their assessment rates can be reduced, obviously that's going to help them to maintain the businesses and, and, and try to fill up some of the vacant, um, locations out there. So I just want to commend, um, council this effort, I think. End further discussion. If not, um, um, it's been moved. I did get a motion, um, second, I missed it, I'm not.
Yes.
It's moving properly. Second, um, Mrs. Matthews, can you please, um, call the role for the vote for item fourteen C?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item fourteen D.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Newton, you recognize.
It doesn't say so in our packet, but does this item need to be reconsidered?
Mr. Brown?
First reading.
You need to reconsider this item?
All right, it's a first reading item.
Oh, it is, it is first reading. Thank you. These are all first reading items. Thank you. Item, uh, fourteen D, uh, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in one or more series, tax exempt or taxable in an amount not to exceed thirteen million dollars to refund a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds and other related matters. Check out the motion, reference item fourteen D.
Move for approval?
Move.
Moving properly, second discussion. There being no discussion, Mrs. Matthews, I'll ask you to call the role for the motion for approval for item fourteen D.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item fifteen on your agenda, which is your report of economic development committee. And that will be by the honorable, you want to make, Brad. Ms. McBride, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for providing me the opportunity to give the report of the economic development committee. Item fifteen A, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of everlaring taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Curve to provide a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. This is a first reading for a proposed fee in lieu taxes to support the expansion of an existing manure factory of packaging materials located near Blythe Wood. This expansion represents a capital investment of twenty-one million dollars and the creation of one hundred and sixty-five new jobs at an average wage of more than seventeen dollars an hour. This audience will require three readings and a public hearing. Again, this is a first reading item. An additional information can be found on pages one sixty-five through one ninety-six.
Committee's recommendation is?
Approval?
Approval.
Thank you. You heard the committee's recommendation. End discussion. There being no discussion, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Matthews to call the role for item fifteen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mrs. McBride?
Okay. It's item fifteen B, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of an everlaring taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County and a company known for the time being as Project Coyote, identifying the project and other matters related thereto. This is an inducement resolution that offers, that officially recognizes the project to allow the company to include an investments as part of their project before any incentive documentation, documents are finalized. Um, this resolution is effective, uh, after approval by county council, and the committee, additional information can be found on pages one ninety-seven through one ninety-eight, as the committee recommends approval.
Very committed recommendation and discussion. There being no discussion, I'll ask Ms. Matthews to call the role for the committee's recommendation for item fifteen B.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. This is item fifteen C, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of an everlaring taxes and taxes and incentive agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and a company known for the time being as Project Coyote to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. This is again a first reading for a proposed fee in lieu of taxes for Project Coyote and existing manure factory of building materials that is considering the co- the consolidation of operations to Richland County and expansion of existing operations. The new project represents an investment of four point eight million dollars and the creation of twenty new jobs with an average wage of more than twenty-one dollars an hour. Uh, this project requires three reading and a public hearing, and the committee recommends approval. Additional information can be found on pages one ninety-nine through two thirty-two.
You heard the committee's recommendation for item fifteen C. Um, end discussion. There being none, I'll ask Ms. Matthews to call the role for the motion regarding item fifteen C.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, is that complete your report?
This concludes my report. Thank you.
Very much. Um, next is item sixteen on your agenda, which is report of rules and appointments committee. Um, that will be presented by the honorable Bill Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The rules and appointments committee met again today, conducted more interviews. Out of the twelve applicants that you see listed under your community relations council, all except one have been interviewed. Unfortunately, one of the individuals called in today with a medical emergency and could not be interviewed. And since there are no additional openings on this council until the year twenty-twenty-three, we felt it only fair to defer that interview until our next meeting, which will be May eighteenth, at which point we'll bring forward our recommendation for the eighth applicant. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very, very much. And let me give special thanks to the, uh, Rules and Appointments Committee because of those brilliant interviews, and I know it's very kind of them, and so certainly appreciate it. Uh, that brings the item seventeen, uh, on your agenda, which is report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. That will be reported by the honorable, over to Walker. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee has three items on tonight's agenda, uh, beginning with item seventeen A, which is the City of Columbia Bike Way Intergovernmental Agreement. Uh, the City of Columbia is requesting funding, uh, through this, uh, IGA or intergovernmental agreement, which supports five, uh, City of Columbia Bike Way projects. Uh, this IGA includes ten different bike way projects that are in the, uh, penny referendum. City of Columbia will perform all design and maintenance activities. And the ten penny bike way projects will provide, well, the county will provide, uh, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand and three hundred and thirty-two dollars in funding, uh, for, uh, ten of those projects. And the committee voted, uh, four to one, uh, to approve staff's recommendation.
Great committee's recommendation and discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Brown, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Page two eighty-one of our agenda, answers question in the committee. Uh, it was, it was somewhat indicated that the, uh, the people given the answers didn't know the answer, and they still haven't received an answer. Under letter, uh, D E, under letter E, where it talks about the agreement will not create any duty or responsibility to anyone other than the parties to the agreement, nor does it create any rights enforceable by anyone other than a party to the agreement. And in parentheses, it says, third-party beneficiary. And I wanted to know, what is a third-party beneficiary? How would that come into play in this situation? And are they also responsible, uh, and bound by this agreement?
And someone asked a question about the role of third party, yeah, uh, Ms. Malinowski's question.
Uh, Mr. Livingston, may I be?
Yeah, you recognize.
Thank you. Ms. Malinowski, um, I did, uh, get in touch with her. Michael Niemeyer got in touch with me, um, and we sent, some answer to your question. So, um, I thought, I thought he'd gotten in touch with you, but third-party beneficiary is essentially, um, someone who might have a benefit from this agreement. Um, so two people, uh, two parties make an agreement, and then they're. So two people, two parties make an agreement, and then there might be a different entity that benefits from it in some way. So what we're saying here is that there are no third-party beneficiaries, that this agreement is between the city and the county, and nobody else can claim a benefit and could come back and sue on this agreement. The parenthetical part is just describing what other party might be.
So we're describing something that isn't, correct?
We just named what other party is, third-party beneficiary. I could have ju, I didn't draft that part. It could have just been written, there's no third-party beneficiaries. That would work as well.
Okay, as you go down to letter I, where it says notice, and it says written notice to the city. I did ask why there is no information regarding a written notice to Richland County. The answer provided was, well, the city is the one that's going to be responsible. They may be, but Richland County is also the one that is providing the funds from the collected penny tax money. And it would seem to me that we may want to have some contact information down there in the event someone does want to provide written notice to the county. Is there any reason why that's not in there?
Uh, there, I had no objection to that change with Mr. Niemeyer.
Okay, and the last question I have, and it may be one regarding just a branding item. And I don't know if you've noticed, but the Comet, as it's currently called, and formerly called CMRTA. Is that just strictly a branding change of name? Or is it actually a new entity that was created and called the Comet, and the CMRTA is no longer in existence?
To the best of my knowledge, it's branding, but we make it speak with whoever's on their, their board here. But I, but I think it's just a branding. If you see, CMRTA is, is illegal entity, and the Comet would be the, the brand, I think.
That's correct, as far as I know, yes.
Okay, if that's correct, that's fine. Thank you.
I have a question, reference item seventeen A. Uh, Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Overture Walker, just want to make sure I read correctly and understood correctly that these bike paths are previously approved bike paths as per the referendum. Is that what I see on page two eighty-three?
Yes, and that's my understanding as well, Ms. Newton, that these were approved in the referendum. But it's just that the, these bike way paths, or projects rather, located in the city, but which is also still, we know the City of Columbia is in Richland County.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Matthews, can you call the, for the vote for the motion regarding seventeen A?
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
All right, next item on the agenda is seventeen B, which is modification to Inovista Phase Three D-Scope and Funding Approval. The City of Columbia has requested one hundred and fifty thousand of Inovista transportation-related project funding for the city's fiscal year twenty-two as part of their budget request. And they're also seeking a letter of commitment to the City of Columbia's request for up to four million eighty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars of future Inovista project funds to support the city's efforts to secure outside federal funding for the Inovista Phase Three project, which is also known as the William Street Connector. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project to the full council.
Very committed recommendation and discussion, reference item seventeen B. Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, just as I read this document, it looked like we, as part of bringing our penny costs down, we de-scope various programs, and this was one of those programs. The way that I'm reading this is we are being asked to undo the re-scope and re-add the funding. Is that, can you help me?
Sure, Ms. Newton, that's not exactly my understanding. I'm going to answer it as best I can. And then if that's not sufficient, I'm going to have Director Niemeyer chime in. My understanding that the City of Columbia is seeking a federal grant that's in the amount, I think nearly twenty million dollars. But to secure that grant, there has to be a commitment of at least, I believe, twenty percent. That's approximately a little over four million dollars. And so, and also as part of that as well, there's a review process known as NEPA that they have to undergo. And so the cost for that review process is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So really, the prerequisite for actually applying, or prerequisite rather, for applying for this federal grant is this NEPA review of a hundred and fifty thousand along with a letter of commitment. There's no money that the county pays upfront, but just, but having a letter of commitment, I guess it gives the impression that the county is, well, the city rather, is a serious player with respect to, I guess, you're applying for these federal funds. And so in the event that the funds are granted, it's certainly a gain for the county because as a result of investing four million, to be willing to put up four million, we're looking at a sixteen million dollar grant, you know, from the federal government to be used for, you know, infrastructure improvement. So does that answer the question, Councilwoman Newton?
Partially, and so I'm very, I'm fine with the NEPA grant. But I guess my question for the four million dollars is, my understanding is that we had de-scoped this part of the project so that these were funds that we were planning on putting into the penny transportation pot for potentially other things. So as it relates to that four million dollars, are we essentially saying these are dollars that we were not originally going to pay because we had removed that part of the Inovista project in our de-scoping? And so the four million dollars represents us re-scoping or re-adding dollars that we previously removed? I'm not sure if I'm asking my question.
No, I think you asked it the correct way. If Director Niemeyer, if he's on, I want to see maybe if he can, you know, get into the weeds a little bit with that. Director Niemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Yet correct, Ms. Newton. Since this was part of the de-scope and that Phase Three was removed by council approval, this actually is essentially re-scoping the Inovista project, adding that Phase Three in as a, as a possible, possible project by acknowledging or by allowing, or I guess by giving that letter of commitment to the city for the four-plus million dollars, as well as the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would go, which would be part of the FY twenty-two budget request.
Thank you. And then even were that to go through, looking at these numbers, that would still leave other funds that would then go back to the penny program? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Based on recent estimates and the updated estimate for the Phase Three that the City of Columbia has provided to the county, being very conservative, I, we anticipate potentially seven to eight million dollars remaining in the fifty million referendum amount for the Inovista Transportation Projects.
Thank you. And so I guess I would say I understand the opportunity to leverage our funding with the grant. I just want to, I, I don't know what the process will be as we move forward, but we were very intentional as we were de-scoping projects. And so if we're going to go back and, and re-scope and re-add all the things, I want to make sure that we are putting in safeguards and are very clear that we're protecting, you know, the savings that we originally made because that's why we de-scope the programs to begin with. So I would, I would hate for us to incrementally end up back where, where we started from. And, and would also, you know, just want to point out, you know, that as these situations come back, that there, there may be other projects that could also benefit from, from using these funds. And so I just wanted to put that out there. So, Mr. Niemeyer, you have answered my question. So thank you, Mr. Walker, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Tracy, you recognize?
Uh, thank you. And as someone who, who voted as part of that de-scoping project, I believe that the reason we de-scoped it was just because it was projected to be so much more expensive than the original plan. And this grant would be an opportunity to leverage federal funds to be able to afford something that, you know, previously would have been beyond our original budget. So i, is that correct? So the, I guess the, the question is, I guess my question is, was the main reason that we de-scoped because the projected expenditure was so much higher than the original referendum estimate?
Maybe recognized, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Tracy, that's absolutely correct. The original estimate for the Phase Three was significantly higher than the current estimate of about twenty million dollars. I think it was, it was shading more towards thirty with our then anticipated seven to nine million dollars. It wouldn't have put a dent in, in anything that was planned. With this, as you said, we're leveraging the money that could be available to go out and get other money, whether it be a federal grant or other that the city may be looking at, and leverage that to secure that money and therefore complete the program, or complete the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll.
Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski?
Recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Niemeyer, initially, the Phase Three was removed, and we were told that would, that would create a savings of five point seven million. So what happened to the rest of the, of that five point seven, since now we're saying we're putting four million back in? It's just still in the budget?
Yeah, that's, that money would be in the out-year budget, sir. So that would, and it also would come from the bike pedestrian greenway side of the house, which was the eighty-five million. So anything that remains of the fifty following completion of Phase Two, which is currently under construction, which again estimates seven to not, seven to eight million, that's what would be leveraged for this four point, I guess, four point zero eight million dollars.
Okay, and as Ms. Newton was saying, originally, council approved the de-scope. Now you're asking for us to re-scope it to the tune of a little over four million dollars. But if we had twenty projects we did that for, you'd be looking at eighty million dollars. And is that fair to the others that are de-scoped? I don't think so, and that's why I, I won't be supporting this one because we're allowing this one to be re-scoped to the exclusion of all the others that we de-scoped, even though there may be federal funds coming. Maybe they could have come with the other projects too. In addition, this is like the third or fourth time the city's applying for this, and has been told no previously as well. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Oh, if I may, here, I just want to be very clear, and Director Niemeyer, feel free to correct me. It's my understanding that by applying for these funds, we lose nothing. Is that correct? So the four million dollars that the city has requested, if, if the city's not successful in winning or earning this grant, it doesn't, the county walks away without losing anything, correct?
That's correct, sir. The only money we'd be, I hate to call it losing, but maybe more investing upfront would have been the hundred and fifty thousand dollars they've requested in their FY twenty-two budget to start the NEPA analysis.
Okay. And with respect to, I guess, other projects that have been de-scoped, has the city approached us about, I guess, other projects where they're applying for federal grants? Or this is the only one? You know, I guess that, that they, where they've approached the county, where they are actually trying to procure, at least trying to leverage public funds to procure federal funds?
Sir, there's, sir, there's been nothing recent, but it's, the county has partnered with the city for the North Main project that is currently underway and nearing completion. So the county put up thirty million dollars between the widening referendum amount as well as the intersection amount. And the city leveraged that to secure a Tiger Grant, which is the predecessor for the current Raze Grant that they're applying for.
So we don't have a situation on our hands where we have countless projects that have been de-scoped, where we're being asked to leverage local dollars to procure federal funding?
That, that's correct, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I give some clarification, please?
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead. I have this, McBride, clarification, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. My, my comment on the money was not directed toward the city and de-scoping and re-scoping. It was directed toward the numerous projects in the county that have been de-scoped. And I'm sure many of them would like to see four million tossed back in there also. That's all that was about. Thank you.
McBride, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a question for Mr. Niemeyer. Uh, Mr. Niemeyer, we de-scoped with the re-scope. And are you saying that, that was my, not my understanding, that it will be an additional four million dollars that we need from the penny tax for re-scoping? Is that correct? Because I need.
Yes, ma'am. Of the, of the fifty million that was allocated for Inovista Transportation projects in the referendum, the Phase Three was de-scoped, which would resulted in a, I guess the savings are somewhere between, was it five to eight million dollars? So that money would essentially be brought back into play out of that de-scope and given as a commitment to the city for them to attempt to secure, you know, up to twenty million dollars in federal funding. And again, this comes out of the bike pedestrian greenway pot of money, which is eighty-five million.
So we are actually adding five million more. I thought that was just tentatively.
It's tentative, ma'am. You're correct. The only way that money would need, would be committed and invested in the Phase Three project is if the city were to be awarded Raze Grant to do the project.
And then that would be an additional fifteen million or twenty million dollars on that particular?
Of outside funding, yes, ma'am. We'd be committing the four point zero eight million to the city for Phase Three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'll ask Ms. Matthews to call the role for the committee's recommendation for item, which one was?
Seventeen B.
Seventeen B.
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and the final item for the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee this evening, this item seventeen C, which is the Transportation Improvement Contract Two pertaining to Old Garners Ferry Road. This project is a penny transportation improvement contract project to repair Old Garners Ferry Road. This project is a one point one mile project, and the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee unanimously voted to recommend that council approve award of the Transportation Improvement Contract to Palmetto Corporation of Conway in the amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-five cents, with the contingency in the amount of seventy thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. That is an aggregate amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Very committed recommendation and discussion. At the end of the discussion, then I'll ask Ms. Matthews to call the role for the motion regarding item seventeen C.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, also, if I may be recognized, I have a motion.
Well, a motion in reference?
A motion in reference to Item 17A, B, and C was a motion for reconsideration.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just just move for reconsideration on Items 17A and C.
Motion for reconsideration is proper second items A, B, and C. Any discussion? Mr. Neermeyer, you need to recognize when we take this motion?
Okay. Sir, that was up to a case...
Okay, you didn't take it down. So, okay, okay. So the move in proper second reconsideration, Item 17A, B, and C. Mrs. Mascan call the role for the motion for reconsideration for Item 17A, B, and C.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracyo?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. That concludes our report, Mr.?
That concludes the report for the Transportation Committee, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That brings item 18, which is other items. 18A is a resolution to appoint and commission Cal Hughes as a code enforcement officer for the property security, general welfare, and convenience of Richland County. The intent and motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
And proper second in the discussion, that being that Mrs. Mascan call the role for the motion for approval of Item 18A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Sorry, yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there, I don't understand a reconsideration for that resolution?
Move to reconsider.
What's the reconsideration for Item 18A and proper second? Ms. Mascan, can you call the role for reconsideration for Item 18A?
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tracyo?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
That brings to item 18B, Taylor's Community Improvement Funds, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, who's going to cover? Trying to unmute, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Yeah, well, the Taylor's Community Improvement.
Yes, sir. This item is an item that was previously before council staff has provided information in the packet concerning this item. And so at this point, there are a couple of options that the council can take. We did reach out to the Recreation Commission, and I do have Community Planning Development was working with this project on the line. But we did reach out to Recreation Commission. They did not have any recommendations for us on how to apply these funds. But in your packet, we have a couple of recommendations that that can be done in order to utilize these funds within the scope in which they were provided. And so what I'll do is I will have Community Planning and Development address the nature of those recommendations, unless for questions that council may have about how to move forward with this expenditure of those funds that were given to the county for that community.
Do you want to recognize before someone?
Yes, I just, I don't, I'm not sure that I heard Mr. Brown correctly, and so I just want to clarify that before the Mr. Voinier or the staff person speaks. Mr. Brown, did you say that we did not hear back from RCRC from the Recreation Commission, or that we did hear back from the Recreation Commission, and they did not have opinions on how we should move forward?
Correct. I did hear back. I spoke with the Ms. Lakita Watson, Executive Director. Did not have a recommendation for us on how to expend those funds. They did not weigh in on that. That is correct.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, if I still have the floor, one more question that might be answered by the staff person who's about to speak. So I'll just put it out there. In my packet, I noticed that there was mentioned that there is a Richland County Recreation Commission Park that is nearby. And I guess I just wondered if that park was built subsequent to us getting the $300,000 funding for recreation, and just how or if that park is being used. And our staff may not be able to speak to that, but I am curious if someone knows. And I can wait to get that answer at the end. Thank you.
And I'll just say, Ms. Newton, to that briefly, when this item, I want to say first came up, but during the course of conversations about that community, I, myself, and Dr. Thompson drove the area, and we came across a park that is in this area. It was not open at the time because of COVID, but there is a park in that community, and it looks to be in a relatively newer. So I will just share that with you and see if the the staff is going to address it, can tell you whether or not we have any awareness as to when this park took place.
Mr. Chair, just a follow-up question.
How do you recognize?
Mr. Brown, in the agenda package, they said that they did not hear from the Recreation Department. Did they hear, did you hear recently after the package was completed, or that?
Yes, ma'am. So what I did was, because we talked about building good relationships, I reached out to the Recreation Commission Director and asked, I said, hey, we are getting ready to meet with our council, and we have information in our packet that reflects no communication from the Recreation Commission on this item. Ms. Watson communicated, that is correct. We have not provided any feedback on how the county should utilize any funds concerning that community.
Thank you, because I just wanted to clarify that they did not respond, but you did reach out, since they did not respond, and that was the result of that.
Yes, ma'am, because I did not want to come on and speak to our body and imply that the commission somehow was concerned or responsive in a way that was reflected appropriately. So, yes, ma'am, I did reach out.
Okay, they did not respond initially. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Crooks is on the line, and I believe he can provide some information if...
Crooks, you recognize?
Yes, sir. So I guess to address Ms. Newton's question first, so yes, there is a park in this area, so the Paris Tomlin Park and Community Center. So it looks like it has been, had a, I guess, renovations and additions to it made recently. I couldn't tell you the specific year. That would be more so a question for the Recreation Commission. But it is within the the project area, or the, I guess, the area that these funds are specifically geared towards. And it is relatively recent, so I'm not sure if that was within the timeframe of when the initial infrastructure agreement was negotiated and enacted, but it is within the past few years or so.
Thank you.
Someone briefly talk about the staff recommendation?
Yes, sir. So what we have staff recommended, we were really looking at kind of two different recommendations, though they are really kind of similar in the same vein. So looking to move to approve with developing a more detailed project plan to expend the $300,000 for the Taylor's community in developing and then implementing what we're referencing as a rail-to-trail art alley. And so as an alternative to that, would be instead implementing various beautification measures, which are identified within the packet, looking at elements such as public art, gateway signage, various programming elements related to those in a more coordinated manner, but kind of more project-specific rather than a larger cohesive project, if that makes sense.
Any questions or a motion for my colleagues?
Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski.
Malinowski, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My big concern with this is not giving them the money, but and I don't know if legal weighed in on this before, but we have a private company that is giving money to a private community. And I don't see why Richland County has gotten in the middle of this. I think the money should be turned over to a responsible party in that community, a homeowners association or a group that's been, that can be created to handle this. But it has nothing to do with county business that I can see. And so that's why I'm not so sure why we're even discussing this. I would think the money should be given to the Taylor's community for use as they see fit, if it's in making sure it's used according to the original instructions that were given. So I'd make a motion to give the money to the to the community for them to use the way they feel is best.
I'll second that.
As the move in proper second, give them to the community and they use it as they see best fit, discussion. Ms. Tracy, recognize?
Thank you. Who in the community, would we give it to the neighborhood president? Would we give it to the person who comes up first in the voter list? I mean, who gets that money in the community? That's that's kind of a very broad. I understand the sentiment, but there has to be an entity to receive it and do something with it.
I indicated there may be an HOA. If not, we can find out, is there an official organization representing that community? And that's where it could go.
Ms. Tracy, you through?
Yes, I think so.
Ms. McClain, I think you may want to speak to this.
I just wanted to remind the council that this money came to us in an economic development agreement. So it was negotiated as part of the agreement. I'm not sure. I know Ms. Myers had something to do with it, but what other council members had something to do, I'm not sure. But if we're going to undo that and do something different, we actually have an ordinance out there that I think states that we're going to use this as a park or something for the community. So we'd need to take that into account.
I want a clarification, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Mr. Walker, you recognize?
Ms. McClain, it was my understanding when we initially interrogated or investigated this this transaction that in fact there was no formal agreement that came through our EDC department specifically, and that EDC was as confused as anyone as it pertained to the $300,000 and its appropriate use, which is what has created the confusion we're currently dealing with today. This deal was negotiated behind the curtain, direct to a developer from a sitting council person, and therefore, having obfuscated protocol, we are now left to clean up the mess. So I think that unless I am completely off-base with the fact that this was done through a formal agreement by way of an infrastructure credit agreement through Economic Development Department and subsequent committee, that we may want to revisit that, because I'm not sure that that's the case. So I just want to raise my hand and say, that's not how we heard it the first time. If, in fact, you have done some discovery and realized that there is a formal agreement, I would withdraw my second and support whatever the ordinance mandates these funds be used for. But when initially explained to us by previous council, there was no formal agreement, hence the confusion.
Mr. Livingston, may I be recognized again?
Yes, please go.
Yes, Mr. Walker. Previously, when we were discussing this issue, I think that that's what everybody thought. At that time, Stacy Hamm, the Finance Director, did some research and found the language in the economic development agreement with Project Rain. There is an actual signed document that we can get to y'all. She's on the call if you want to speak with her about it.
I hope I can trust you to tell me the same thing she would tell me. So if that is the case, I would draw my second previously.
That, that, the second of the motion, that motion is known before us, unless there's another second to it. Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of questions, and some of them follow-up on what Mr. Walker and Ms. Tracyo were saying. So I guess first, let me say to staff, thank you for coming back to us with these ideas. And I think that they were really creative and an interesting way to incorporate these funds in the community. So overall, my questions, I guess, acknowledging that this has been a convoluted process, at least since I've been on council. I've only been confused about this. My questions would be, I feel like there's more information that I would like to have. So for example, I don't know, is there, you know, what does the agreement say? What are we allowed to do? Is there, in fact, a community HOA that we could work with? I know from an RCRC perspective, they are in the process of making broad facility plans in terms of what they can support. I have questions about that, but primarily, I guess I'm wondering at this point, what the community expectations are and the community feelings are. This has been, at this point where we are, it feels very, very council-driven for this community, but I'm not sure what it is that they're wanting, and that makes it hard for me to have opinions here. But I do have questions, like I said, in terms of what the agreement says we're obligated to do and who our partners are. So I'll just put it out there. I wouldn't be ready to do anything on this without additional information. But again, I appreciate the staff's efforts on this.
Can I get a motion from the councilman? I don't have a motion now.
There are two...
Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer this item to our next meeting.
It's motion to defer to our next meeting is their second.
Second.
Proper second, we defer it to our next meeting. The referral is debatable. I'll ask Ms. Mascan to call the role for the motion for the referral to our next meeting.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I realize this is a deferral, I'm about...
It's deferred to our next meeting.
But who's, where we're deferring it to? Is it going back to staff or committee?
Yes, 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 it's going back to staff, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That brings the session items. There are no executive session items. For our motion period, we have a motion of Item 28, reducing will need to be done by election. And to the point, I request administration to begin the process for that end. It doesn't help to send that to a committee, but we'll just send that to administration. Mr. Brown, have we started receiving preliminary numbers yet regarding? Before we do anything, we have the preliminary number regarding the census.
Yes, sir. I haven't received that direct information, but I have reached out and have already started the process of... Yes, sir, I haven't received that direct information, but I have reached out and have already started the process of trying to procure, I should say procure, determine options for who would get to help our redistricting process. I, so I can share that with you right now, but, and we've looked at what the county did last time. Did we procure somebody? Did we use state resources? So I have gone through that process, I understand that the county procured someone, but it was for a specific reason, and that specific reason no longer exists. While right now, I have already begun to start this process, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. Mr. Malinowski, that's sufficient for your motion at this single point in terms of, in terms of starting the process?
That, that's fine, Mr. Chair, just to remind you, I know the last time we did this, ten years ago, an ad hoc committee was created. I don't know if that's needed or not, I just throw that out for your info.
Thank you, I'll, I'll get with Mr. Brown, I mean, if I think it's ad hoc committees need, I'll perform one.
Yeah, I've spoken with Mr. Brown, and I think he's already ahead of the curve here, it looks like, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, thank you. So we'll clear with that motion. So next item I'll get is adjournment. I think there's a motion for adjournment in proper second.
Second and third and fourth.
Mrs. Mathis, can you, can you call the role for the motion for adjournment?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Page, move to that.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, meetings adjourned, everyone have a wonderful, lovely evening.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a good night.
Yes, good evening.
I move for reconsideration.
We'll meet you here the next time, you stay to get back.